City Attorney, which I value greatly. So we'll take it to a vote. Teresa, keep pushing. We're having technical... See, my thing was, I was stealing that from another chairman. No opposition, speed up the process.
Lock her vote in.
I'm doing it. It's like in her.
She can't push that thing any harder without breaking it.
You gotta push the other one. Hit confirm.
Hit confirm.
I did. Hit confirm and then hit yes.
And item one, approval of the minutes of the November 16, 2020 regular city council meeting.
I'll vote to do that, sir.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further comments? Seeing none. Let me clear. Take a vote. There you go, ladies and gentlemen. Now it's Kevin's turn to push the button 15 times. There we go. Eyes have it so moved. Item 1B, approval of the minutes, October 6, 2020, special city council meeting.
I'll make that motion there.
Second. And a second. Any comments? Seeing none? Technology. Eyes have it, vote is unanimous, so moved. Item 2A, Noriega Point Phase 3 improvement update, sir. We have our representative from FDEP online. James?
Hello, P. We have Pierce Barrett from FDEP. He's the project manager for Noriega Point Park improvements, and he's going to give us an update on Phase 3.
Go ahead, Pierce.
Yes, good evening. I hope all of you are doing well. I apologize if I don't... This is the first time I've done one of these not being in person. So hopefully, in the near future, next update will be in person and not in distance. But anyway, also like to offer my congratulations to the new council members, and I look forward to meeting all of you in person in the near future. Right now, the Noriega Point last phase, we call it the recreational phase, is ready to be put on the streets, so to speak, for bids, with the exception of having it reviewed by your city building department, which the plans and specifications will be submitted this week for review. With that being said, we hope then to be able to put it out on the street right after the turn of the year in January, and receive the bids on the project in February, and then issue a notice to proceed in April with completion of the project in the next nine months, which would be December of 2021. The project has not changed since the original... Well, basically, the 60% plans that were presented, and then the 90% plans, I think was the last time we had a presentation. And then we had to wait to go through a strenuous process of getting a permit from DEP for the coastal construction line or CCL permit. What you have up on the screen in front of you right now is just for your information, especially those of you new on the council that may not be real familiar with the project. The lower, to me, lower left-hand picture is what Noriega Point looked like before we started the stabilization project. And the other picture next to it is the completion of the stabilization project. You can see there's quite a bit of additional acreage that was added to the point. You can see two more embayments that weren't there, swimming embayments on the inlet side, which weren't there when we started the project, and also the sand structure, which is called a dike now because of the permitting process, is considerably a lot more extensive than it was. You can see all the stabilization that went in in the first phase of the project, which was all that armament around the point, and then the T-groins that are guarding, so to speak, the embayments on the inlet side. James, if I can get you to go to the next slides, hopefully that you received. This is what the project... There he goes. This is what the project now, what we call Phase 3. Phase 1 was the stabilization. Phase 2 was the vegetation of the sand structure, and Phase 3 now, Phase 2 rather, and Phase 3 now is the recreational phase. And I just want to emphasize the importance of the recreational phase. Without this phase of the project, or these structures going in, this project would not have become a NERDA project funded under the BP early restoration. So this project will include, as was presented earlier, in the conceptual, all the way up through 60 and 90% plans, includes the boardwalk that you see running along the harbor, entire harbor side of the point that goes out all the way to the tip. That is an ADA accessible structure in which anyone of various ability can be able to traverse that boardwalk. The other portions of the project, and I want to emphasize the ADA portion, this project was made to be as best as could be ADA accessible. That's one of the big things about the project, was allowing people of limited physical ability to now enjoy the point as well as those of 100% capability. The project includes an ADA accessible restroom facility that has a women's, a men's, and a family section to it. It also includes an access boardwalk down to the first embayment, and then a pavilion off to the north, which is for persons that may not want to enjoy the waterfront portion of the project, but be able to enjoy the visual views that are offered from Noriega Point. I'll show you some general pictures of these in just a little bit. There's also three dune crossover or boardwalk structures that you can see along the point. These are included as alternate bid items in the project, and that's only because of the limitation possibility of funding. But there's three of them right now proposed, and we intend, hopefully, to be able to build all three of them. They are not ADA accessible, I want to point that out. That was not physically possible to build those structures because of the heights of that sand structure, but they will be accessible for others, and there is an out point on the very top of those structures where benches are provided to people to enjoy the views, both harbor side and inlet side from the point. The... As I said, those are alternates. So you may ask, what was changed between 90% and now? The only thing that was changed, and we hold the percentage 100% out until we go through all the permits, and all permits are now received on the project from the states, both our coastal construction control line permit, any other permits we had. That was the primary permit we had to obtain, and that was quite a task, and I congratulate our consultants for managing to work with the department and get this permit obtained. What was changed from the last set of plans you saw was only the fact that the boardwalk access that goes to the first embayment, and that's that half-moon looking cut into the point, that's the swimming areas. That area is primarily intended to be for those with limited physical access because of its closeness. That was... We had to reduce the boardwalk itself in size a small amount. We had to reduce its width. The department was objecting to the original size, which is 12-foot wide, and we reduced it back to eight-foot wide, which is still a sufficient structure for allowance for people to pass each other, say, in wheelchairs or other types of mobility. Normal ADA sidewalk, for example, is five feet wide. We also reduced the length of the mobi mat that was originally proposed to go all the way down to the swimming embayment. The department requested we reduce that back to 50 feet off the end of the boardwalk. Mobi mat, by the way, if you're not familiar, is a flexible mat that is allowed to be laid on top of the sand, which allows those in wheelchairs or other type vehicles to have access over that soft sand, and that mat is typically rolled up and put away when you know there's a storm approaching the coast. And right now, like I said, the schedule is, once we get past the billing department, which hopefully will not have too many comments, then we will put the plans on the street and put it out for bid. So that's the status at this point. And if you have any questions... Well, let me move on to a couple more slides real quickly just to show those that are new on the council. This is a picture of the point again, that shows some of the... Where the vegetation is and other items. James, if you go to the next slide. That is an elevation of the restroom facility. As you can see, it's an extensive facility. If you look at the east side elevation, that shows the ramping that's required to be able to access this facility to meet ADA standards. Some of the last things that will be done is, of course, when this facility is beginning to be constructed, this contractor will submit various paint schemes and things like that that the council will have a last vote on to determine what colors they want. Right now, all colors are proposed for blending into the dune or dike itself, so that it's not a standout structure paint-wise or color-wise. Go to the next one, please, James. And that's an elevation view of the pavilion, which is shown on the site plan. It's a simple structure to provide shade protection, et cetera. And I believe that's basically the slides I had to show you. There will be a complete set of plans available at City Hall. They'll be provided to your staff, and they'll be able to print out a set and have it if you want to look at the plans in detail. There's quite a few sheets in these plans, but if anyone should have some questions on the plans once you view them, please feel free to contact me, and I'll be glad to help walk you through them and any questions you may have. Hopefully, we'll be able to come back in February at the latest and give you the notice of award and what the project's budget will be and so forth. So I wouldn't entertain any questions that the council may have at this time.
I have a couple, or at least one anyways. I do have a couple, so Dr. Ramswell, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Barrett. We appreciate you being here, even if it is virtually. It's very insightful. Thanks. A couple of questions for you. What percent plans are these that you're showing us?
90. Well, and I know percentage is confusing, Dr. Ramswell, when we say something. We said 90 originally, and then now we're saying 95, and we're holding that last 5%. What we did is, when we submit for permits, good design practice is to call your plans when you finish your designs, and your details are done, your notes are finished, but you reserve a percentage, whether it may be hypothetical, but you reserve a percentage of completion when you send it in for permitting, because you could have some changes that occurred during the permitting, and which we did. So that was what I discussed earlier. We had to change the width on the boardwalk structure, the ADA boardwalk structure to the beach, and we had to reduce the length of the mobi mat. But otherwise, the components of the project have not changed, and the general design parameters and everything else are all the same. I'm saying 95 now because if we send it into your billing department, and they have some questions or things that require changes on the plans or additions to the plans, then we would add that to it. Otherwise, if there's no changes that occurred during the billing department review, then the plans, as you see now, at 100%, at 95, will be the same as 100.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious, because I know the DEP website, back on September the 8th, they actually had a certified filed copy of the 95% plans that we had not yet seen. So I'm just wondering what the difference is and why that was filed before we had even seen and discussed an element of it.
Well, that's probably just... I can't really tell you why that was, but what you're seeing now is no different than basically what you saw in 60%. The project has not changed in what's in the project and the general emphasis of the project. The only thing that's changed since... From 60 to 90 was the change in detail. We added the details to the project, and especially in the notes and so forth were formalized. But the only thing that changed since I've had a chance to come before you was the additions or changes that the DEP coastal unit required for us to be able to obtain that CCL permit.
Sure.
And that was the minor things I said. So the next set of plans will be, you know, plans issued for construction, and we go from there. That doesn't mean a plan... A set of plans doesn't change once we issue for construction. You can have questions that come up during the bid process that cause an amendment to the plans or addendum, as we call it, and then plans can change as you get into actual construction. There may be conditions that were unforeseen. We trust that there won't be any major changes, but it happens.
Sure, I understand. I was just curious, because I know these plans that were submitted to the DEP is 95%. We're taking the survey date and the plan date, excuse me, is August the 28th, and the ones that you showed were in October. So I'll look forward to seeing those plans and just sort of comparing and being able to see if there are any differences, because the dates are different.
I understand. Well, those dates... The difference in the dates is the fact that there were conditions put on the designs from the department on issuing that CCL permit, and once that was done, then, of course, our consultants needed to add those changes to the plans and make the... Some of the notes were also refined. I mean, if you give an architect or an engineer an unlimited timeframe, they can sit there and look at a set of plans forever and make minor changes.
So my next...
Having been a designer myself, I know that.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying. My next question is that you referred to the new sand structure as a dike, and I know that a lot of the other dykes in that area that are supportive structures of the jetty system and throughout Noriega Point are actually part of easements held by the Corps of Engineers. Will this have some sort of easement or restriction placed on it as well?
I don't know any restrictions that would be placed on it. I'm not sure what you're inferring to as far as restrictions. It's name... The semantics that changed the name of that from being a dune to a dike is because the dunes are typically looked at as these sand structures, natural or man-made, that are facing the Gulf of Mexico. And this is not a dune structure that is a primary dune that faces the Gulf. It's basically a... Well, the last part of it is a man-made structure, and it really forms the purpose of a dike. Should water levels reach a certain storm event, that this dike would prevent the waters from rolling over the point, rather, and directly across the harbor into the... All the structures that are built there on the other side of the harbor. As you know, we've had several named storms since this project has been completed, and we have not had any significant damage or changes out there at Noriega Point.
Yes, thank you very much for explaining that. You then talked a little bit about the ADA accessible areas, and I was just curious, where does the ADA accessible sidewalk begin?
I assume you mean the boardwalk?
However it is that people with those needs will enter the park.
Okay, well, the project includes, or way it was presented by the city some years ago, that there will be an access road and sidewalks between the entrance of the park and the ending of the road that is currently there at the end of Noriega Point. Yes, thank you, James. The... If you blow that up some, the... Any construction of the roadway and sidewalk is to be funded by the city itself or through a developer's development order for that portion that goes between the entrance of the park, which you can see on this drawing where the entrance is, and then you go to blow it up some, you'll see the ending of the roadway, the paved roadway now. That sidewalk and the roadway were designed by our consultants and permitted, so the city would have to only go out and bid the roadway and sidewalks and so forth construction. Or otherwise, you have the developer of that last piece of property build the roadway and sidewalks and other amenities, stormwater, et cetera, that would need to be constructed in that part of Noriega Point. But the boardwalk in which I'm talking to, which is funded by the NERDA project, begins right at the entrance of the park itself, there where the restroom facilities are, the boardwalk that goes to the shelter or pavilion, the boardwalk that goes down towards the beach, and then the boardwalk that goes all the way around the harbor side out to the point of the project of Noriega Point. That is all ADA accessible.
Okay, and where is the handicap parking?
Your handicap parking would be in that portion of Noriega Point that is to be constructed by the city. It's been designed, but it's not included in this project.
Okay, and I believe that's something that's under investigation right now, but in terms of the road and who's responsible for it. But as of this time, do the plans, any plans you've seen, account for actual parking spaces that are handicapped?
Yes.
Okay, good. So they're on the section of roadway, not all the way into the park, though?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I felt like in some description of the project, it said a road into the park as opposed to stop, which, stopping just before it. And the reason for the detail here is I noticed that on the property lines, at least on the 95% plans presented to the DEP, the property line is not the property line shown on the deed or the dedication legal description.
Dr. Ramswell, I'm not going to comment on...
That's really out of sight of his purview of his presentation today.
Well, he's part of the planning and pulling together the plans.
But that's what he's given us, is Noriega Point project plan.
Absolutely, and part of the plans would be lines and making sure everything's in the proper property and parcel. So that's something that we need to be looking into, and I think our attorneys may already be examining that. The last question I had, I believe, had to do with the CCL permitting. Who is actually on that permit? Is the city listed on that permit, or is it the county? Is it the DEP? Who are the parties listed on that?
The permit for the design and construction of all those facilities is the city.
Okay, and the city alone?
That red line that you see on that plan on the screen is the CCL line.
Right, so the city is on that by ourselves? There's no joint holder?
No.
Permitting, the permitting, obviously the line is the line.
Permit is the city's destiny.
Perfect. That's all the questions I have. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's so good to see this coming along and all these details and getting them all in order, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I got one other person, Pierce, Councilwoman Abra.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief. Pierce, when you came to us with the Parks and Rec Committee, you were talking about the three walkovers, and just now you said that some of them may be questionable because of funding. Did I misunderstand you? Are those three walkovers still part of the project?
Yes, ma'am. The project included these three walkovers. My only question is, because of costs that are being experienced in the construction industry right now, we've got to look at what is the primary components of the project, and those dune crosswalks overs were not. But they are including in... They are included in the plans, they're included in the bid documents, but they'll be presented as three alternatives. So if, for example, the bids come in a lot higher than anticipated, then we would look at, you know, what can we construct with the budget and additional funds we acquire through going to the trustee group for available money? Will we be able to build one of them, two of them, or three of them? Our goal is to build all three of them, but as with anything, you know, you have limitations. Like, you may want to buy everything you can get on a new car, but then you have to start going back if the price is above your plan.
You've answered the question. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Glad to have you on the council.
Yes, and I got a couple more. Pierce, Mr. Brayton.
Thank you, Mayor. How is it possible to build that pavilion outside the CCL line?
That... Well, the pavilion was one of the things that was brought in as a variance, and because the structure is referred to as a dune, it's not a primary dune like you have out there where you're along the Gulf Coast beaches. So because of that, and because of our modifications to the boardwalk itself and other reductions such as mobi mat, we were able to, I guess you could say, negotiate with our beaches division to allow the construction of that structure.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for bringing us up to speed on this project. Next question is for staff. Just curious why none of these drawings were in our agenda packet that we were seeing tonight. Mr. Brayton, we didn't receive these particular pictures until this afternoon, so I apologize for that. Okay, thank you.
That... I'll take the hit on that as far as the staff not receiving those till this afternoon, and that's my apology not being able to work within your And that's my apology not being able to work within your timeframe last week. Uh, I guess my own schedule got ahead of me. And I will take the hit on your not having them. We'll make sure that you have these, any presentation materials i- in your hands uh, within your usual submitted times.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. It's refreshing to have somebody just ante up and, you know, take the blame, so we can, we can move on. Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bray. Got one more, Pierce, Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Pierce, thank you so much for this presentation. Also very excited, uh, about this to be coming to a close in the next twelve months, so it's pretty cool. James, could you put those first two pictures up that he started the very beginning? Real quick, just got a quick question. So you were talking about this is before the project, and this is, you know, more recently, not too recently. And then if you look at even the survey picture that we were just looking at, those little swimming swells that you were talking about are even larger than that right there, which I think the swimming swells would turn into like boat parking swells from what I see when I go out there sometimes. How, who is the responsible people, um, as those swells continue to erode and that potentially impacts that boardwalk that is being built? How does that like fall in the responsible party, the, to stop the erosion, fix the erosion? I know we have an item coming up that we're going to talk about, which will be exciting to hear about. But how, how does that, uh, who, who, who's that impact or responsible party for dealing with that erosion of those swimming swell areas on the park?
Uh, well, well, primarily, as you'll see, the, the pic, the first picture there where the, you see the boat or ship barred moving in, that's actually about a day before they'd be actually began driving the sheet piling, uh, for the project. Um, those embankments have pretty well stabilized themselves. Um, we've had, well, we had Hurricane Michael, we had, we've had Sally, we've had a couple of others in between. I can't even remember all the names. But the stabilization, uh, is holding its own. We don't expect, uh, and nothing's guaranteed, but we don't expect from this design that those embankments are going to erode more. That's the whole purpose of the stabilization that you see there. Those tea groins, as we call them, uh, you've got two new ones, and we reestablished, uh, the original tea groins, uh, groins that were out there.
I'm sorry, I, I was more referring to the swimming areas on the western side, not the point, but the swimming areas that are continuing to erode. So if you go back to the most recent slide that was divided last night or today.
Well, actually, they're, they're not, they have not eroded. They're intended to erode a small amount. So they create a slope that, uh, dissipates the energy of, of wave action that comes in there. But we don't intend that these embankments, as you see them now, are going to, uh, erode much more than you see them right now. Uh, and I'll hang on for your talk when you go to talking about the dredging that's, uh, operation that the Corps of Engineers is going to undertake in, in the next year or so. Uh, but those embankments are not. But as far as who, who is responsible for maintaining them? Well, the point, with exception of a portion of it, belongs to, uh, the City of Destin. So it's, you're not, hopefully will not have to do maintenance on those embankments. Uh, you know, I can't guarantee what type of storm may hit here in the, in the future. But with the storm action we've seen over the last two years, and that last picture you saw was taken in October of twenty eighteen.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bray, one more?
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, um, Mr. Schmidt, um, engineer Matt Trammell told me several years ago that, that engineered this. He had no idea how much that was going to erode. They did narrow the opening from the rocks down, um, I guess from the original plan. But he told me as, as far as how much, because I asked the same question, how much it was going to erode? He had no idea. He said it was depending on the wind, swells, whatever. But that's a great, great thought, great question is who, you know, if it does, he wrote, who's going to foot the bill on that one?
I imagine if we do have to foot that bill, we'll be asking for a federal grant to get it fixed, just like we do with all our other parks that get tore up by storms. Got to love FEMA, right? Ms. Ramswell, last question.
Sure, and, um, just a, a question, and this is for you, Mr. Barrett, or, um, staff. But my understanding is that a section of the northern tip, um, perhaps even the eastern side, has slightly eroded already? Are you aware of that and why is that happening? Was that intentional?
Okay, I'll, I'll answer best, I guess, it's, uh, Pierce. Um, is it intentional? Well, we have the feeling that it may occur. Uh, the erosion you're talking about or, or outwash of sand is off of the, uh, northeastern part of the stabilization of the point. There's been some occurrence of, of, uh, water action that has pulled sand from behind that, uh, stabilization structure. Does it, uh, compromise the stabilization structure? No. Will that sand be replaced? Yes. Uh, we already had plans, in our plans, that when they build the restroom facilities and so forth, there will be some, uh, grating of sand in that area. And it was more than enough that would be used to fill that, uh, area that has washed out behind that, uh, stabilized portion of the point. If, uh, otherwise, there's also sand that will become available through the core dredging, uh, that, that's going to take place in the next, uh, six to twelve months.
Perfect. You answered that exactly. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you so much.
All right, Pierce, I thank you so much for your time and your presentation. And, uh, we look forward to you coming back. And, um, I'm sure if any council members have any further discussions, they can contact you directly for good answers. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three. Public comments on the agenda items that are not public hearings and any other matters not on the agenda. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so I just want to encourage people to refrain to, uh, even discussing those. You'll have an opportunity when we're in that portion of the meeting. Uh, when you come up here, just state your name and, and your address, and you'll have three minutes to state your case. And like I said, it doesn't have to be necessarily anything on the agenda item. It, it could be any subject matter that, that you as a concerned citizen would like to share with the council. So at this time, by the way, James and, and Ray, I'll check with you before I close this portion of the meeting to see if you have anybody queued up or any texts or emails that need to be shared. So I will change my normal protocols of starting over here to tonight. We're going to start over this way. So if there's anybody over in this portion of the room that'd like to step up, come on up. Um, come on up, sir. It's Parker Destin.
Honorable Mayor, council members. Parker Destin, seven thirty Kelly Street. I only gave you a week off from having to deal with me, so I'll do my best. You got a timer on me now, though. Uh, so, in the previous four years, I think one of the greatest accomplishments, accomplishments that this council, um, achieved was the clawing back of the procedures to review development. You know, the City of Destin was created to chart its own destiny for basically one purpose, which was to see what kind of growth would occur and have control over it, rather than have the county be the exclusive arbiter of what gets approved in town. We lost our way over about twenty years and procedurally over a, uh, sort of a death by a thousand cuts, we basically handed everything over to staff. Well, we reversed that over four years. The, um, issue now is that you guys have a lot of development review. And the result is that a lot of the code doesn't necessar- necessarily jive with what probably you guys here is public policy, meaning we have a lot of codes that provide odd areas and, and allow for, uh, perhaps too intensive growth in certain areas and for reasons that don't make sense anymore. Everything from parking credits to, um, uh, to minimum green space requirements. What I say to you now is now that you're, have the ability to oversee development, now it's time to get your codes to catch up. You know, you had a contentious, uh, development review, um, an interesting one last week, or excuse me, last meeting, that basically a lot of folks hinged on the idea. They go, this is too many units, there's not enough parking. Why the heck is this something that the code says can happen? Well, it's because the code is old. You need to fix it. So that means, uh, if you don't like the idea of, um, too much density, that means you've got to meet, you've got to instruct staff to go and bring you back an ordinance that readdresses the units per acre in certain, in a lot of these transition areas around town. Uh, I would say get started on that, because it's now time to start catching your code up to what you think you want the future to look like, which I think most of us agree that single-family residential is the way we want to go. And perhaps high-volume, uh, uh, you know, intense development of residential areas is not necessarily the way to go. Now, that's up for you guys to decide, but until your code says that, you're going to continually have folks who are going to come up for applications. And there's no offense for anybody who's on the, uh, on the dock tonight, because I believe they're asking for stuff that is approved by the code. And honestly, if it's approved by the code, then that's what you got to approve, basically. But you got to catch up to codes. Um, if you don't want to see parking garages around town without your approval, then you need to change your code, to change the code from a permitted use of a parking garage to a conditional use. If it's conditional, it has to come before you, before a public hearing, at which point you give it its blessing before it has to be approved. Otherwise, you've lost all your leverage, it just, it just gets approved. Um, you need a multimodal overhaul, desperately so. The, the types of credits that, that are being handed out due to a system that never functioned and probably never will, that needs an overhaul. But you got to instruct staff to come back with, uh, with the overhaul so that you can approve it. You need to do it sooner than later. Uh, the last thing I'll part you with is, uh, the old-time pottery property. Unless you guys want to be sitting here in a couple of years being asked to approve a five-hundred-unit apartment complex, uh, we better acquire it and we better turn it into something that people want. And honestly, the easiest solution for everybody is that recreational-type facility that we've talked about. We got lost in the weeds on what we would put there if we got the property. But that's like picking out the drapes before you've, you've got the financing to buy the house. You need to buy the property first. And the only way that you can do that is with a cohesive approach where you guys as, uh, council instruct staff and a person from the council to go walk hand in hand, go get Mel Ponder, who is our commissioner, so he can talk to the, uh, uh, excuse me, so he can talk to the tourist development council so that you can both go to Trust for Public Lands and/or the Triumph Gulf Coast folks, that you can start acquiring that piece of property so that then you can have the conversation about what kind of recreational complex you want to put on there. I'll piggyback off what Dewey told me. Dewey did tell me that, uh, I think the, uh, I think the folks over at school board are going to eventually be asking you for more space, um, at the, uh, at the recreational facilities next to Destin Elementary, because they're going to need to expand, uh, over the next several years. Now that they've got the half-sent sales tax, you're going to be, potentially could be losing ball fields. Old-time pottery could be a good place to start that. And you got to get it going soon, because nothing happens fast. I went over my three minutes. Thank you for indulging me. It's always good to see you guys.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, get the cane, jerk you out away from the microphone, being a former council member.